The regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona to be held December 1st, 2020 at 6:00 p.m. We could please have the deputy clerk take role?
Councilmember Weldon.
Here.
Councilmember Henry.
Here.
Councilmember Halls.
Here.
Councilmember Carratt.
Here.
Councilmember Narin.
Here.
Mayor Olensky.
Here.
And Vice Mayor Matthews is absent.
Very good, thanks. All right, please stand to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The next thing on the agenda here is a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during this summary. And do we have any council members with anything to report?
Yesterday, I received an email on my next door, which I try to stay off of. It caught my attention. It was a gentleman by the name of Robert Short. And he posted that Sundays, he goes to the post office, pick up his mail. So being a good citizen, he wore his mask into the post office, came out, took his mask off, and because he wears hearing aids, and I can sympathize with him in that respect, he lost his right hearing aid between the front seat, his passenger, or his driver's seat in the console in his car. He was unable to retrieve it. I assume he must be older. He responded to the public safety building, contacted the fire department dispatcher, and an unknown fireman responded outside and assisted Mr. Short in recovering his hearing aid. And I just wanted to give some kudos to the fire department and an unknown fireman that assisted him. He was very appreciative of that service, and that speaks highly of our city and our fire department, so I want to thank them.
Great, thank you. You mentioned next door, and I got a little scared, to be honest with you. Nice to hear something positive, that's awesome. I'll just update council and public briefly. We do hold a weekly meeting for, we started it in March, it's a COVID recovery meeting, and then would quickly emerge into economic recovery, and there's that fly that was buzzing around. And there were about maybe eighteen, twenty folks on the call today, and this is really the first time ever, but I would say well over half, if not three-quarters of the folks on the call today are either in quarantine, or have been COVID-positive, have family members that are COVID-positive now. And it was alarming to see it some, you know, come so close to home, not so much on the periphery anymore. So, anyway, just a reminder again that, you know, we're in COVID territory now, for sure, in the thick of it, and with Thanksgiving having just taken place, you know, we're always concerned about numbers spiking, and our chief medical officer was on the phone this morning, which is good, or this afternoon, to give us an update. But yeah, fairly concerning numbers at the hospital right now, so we all need to continue to do our part. And that's it. Ron, do you have anything to report?
I do. Mr. Mayor, if I can just continue on about that meeting, a couple of things that Dr. Pontecca said. I received a couple of questions about, are the patients that are counted, I think today was twenty-two, twenty-four yesterday, inpatient COVID patients, are they there to be treated for COVID, or are they there because of kidney stone and have COVID, because they have very aggressive testing measures there? He clarified that almost all are there to be treated for COVID. So they either, and to be admitted for COVID at the hospital, that means you need to be on oxygen, whether a nasal cannula or otherwise. If you're being admitted for COVID, it's because you need extra oxygen. So those twenty patients are all there being treated for COVID. One other interesting point was, I was asking about community spread, or whether there was an outbreak in a long-term care facility, or some other, you know, issue. Early on, we were able to pinpoint some of the issues to one location, or a couple outbreaks, and he said that is not the case now. It is clearly a community spread, and it can't be really pinpointed to one other location. And then for anybody else that continually watches the numbers on their websites, I was a little alarmed, because I had made a miscalculation. So they've been running, if you look at their total capacity, at about fifty percent. So I felt like, you know, we can, we're doing all right, we've got plenty of space in here. But what I hadn't taken into account is staffing issues. So when you look at the capacity based on nurses, which is the staffing model he described today, we are nearing capacity. As a matter of fact, we have a couple people coming in through the NHA system, through the state, from out-of-state, that are going through the certification process to get their, you know, Arizona license, to give them assistance over the next couple of weeks, so that they can have more capacity. So even though the total number of beds are, you know, well at, you know, fifty, sixty percent, we are much near capacity when you look at the manpower it takes to care for our inpatients. So it was just, it was not a very good call today. There was a lot of bad news. Staffing update for the city, we are still doing very well. All of our positive cases and otherwise have been, minus our fire department, have come from outside, and we've not had any employee-to-employee transmission, other than the fire department, and we've not had any known cases of customer-to-employee transmissions that we know of, you know, for sure. So we've done a good job. It was nice to hear one of our newest employees talk about how appreciative she was of all the precautions we take to protect our employees, and so we've done a good job. We've been able to remain open, so anybody needing to do business at the city has been able to do it, and it's one of the things that we're proud of here. People ask, you know, some of my peers, you know, why we're still open, and we've just been able to do so safely. I'm appreciative to my team that's here, and others, for all the work that they do, and the safety precautions they take, protecting their employees and our customers. I just couldn't be prouder of our team during this COVID-19 pandemic. And then I'm asking, I hope Mr. Mayor, it's okay, Jack Till, our Parks and Recs manager, to come up and give an update of one of my items, but he'll do a better job, so I'm going to have him come up and give the Parks and Rec update, and I just want to update a couple other items. Our youth basketball league program is now open. You can register online at cottonwoodaz.gov. The registration fee is forty dollars per child, and a five-dollar discount for siblings. Registration ends December 20th. And then Parks and Rec, are you going to talk about the angel tree?
Whatever you'd like.
So I'll leave the letters and the angel tree to you, and then for upcoming meetings, we have a recreation, the following commission meetings will be here at the rec center this month. So we have the airport commissioning, commission meeting tomorrow night, Wednesday, December 2nd, at 6:00 p.m. here, and then we have a special meeting of the Historic Preservation Commission, which will meet on Wednesday, December 16th, at 6:00 p.m. here, and then Planning and Zoning Commission will also meet here on Monday, December 21st, at 6:00 p.m. And then I will let Jack give the rest of Parks and Rec update.
Mr. Mayor, council, thank you guys. So I wanted to come and talk a little bit about a program that we were able to get approved for this year, that we plan on doing. Back in late October, early November, we submitted an application with Mr. Santa Claus and the group, to see if we can do a Letters to Santa location out of the recreation center. And late October, or late November, we got our congratulations letter that we were approved as a location for the Letters to Santa. Our mailbox has had a delay, the elves got stuck in some snow coming out of the North Pole to get it here to our local Home Depot, but hopefully, we can get that here within the next day or two. But Santa also gave us some of the examples that are going to be sent out to the kids. So everybody who's able to come in, submit a letter, will get a letter back from Santa Claus himself, and in each letter, it's got his wax seal on it that he does, and then it'll be received back with this super cool little treat. So I got these here to give to you guys to see, if you guys want to play around with them, check them out, see what they are, I'll leave them over here. That program is already started. If somebody wants to come in and drop a letter off, we'll make sure it gets into the mailbox that goes directly to Santa Claus. And then we have our certification of approval that we're going to post right above it. So that's something that we're doing this year, that we were really proud that we got approval from Santa Claus to do. And then tonight, we also got our angel trees up, working with Cottonwood Oak Creek School District. We were able to provide the angel tree here at the recreation center again. So as you come in, you'll see it's right over here in the nook. We have fifty angel tags at first. Hopefully, we can get rid of all of those, and then get a second grouping of them. But that's out there, as long as we get the angel trees back by December 15th, we'll get those presents wrapped up, get back to the school, and they'll be able to hand out those right before they go on Christmas break. So with that, I'd take any questions on any of the programs, and go from there.
Any questions? Great work, thank you.
Awesome. I'll leave these over here with Mr. Steve, and you guys can check them out if you'd like.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, very good. Okay, next, we have one presentation this evening from John Carter, I'm assuming, information regarding the recent City of Cottonwood email outage.
John Carter, Information Technology Director. I'm just going to talk a little bit about the email outage that occurred in October and early November, and just give you a little bit, I'll swear, I'll try not to get too technical about this. We'll go over the timeline, the outage, and then the fix we applied, and then a few notes about it. So the timeline, the email server failure happened on October 8th, around 1:45 p.m. Then we worked to restore the server back to its original state. That work went on from the 8th until the 14th, along with our IT support vendor and Microsoft as well. That having failed, we moved forward with the Office 365 online email system, as you all know. It took us a couple of days to get that all set up, and then we were able to route the email to that server on the 16th. Then we restored the email to the new server. That took quite a long time, as you all know, from the 22nd until we finished up on the 4th of November. And that means all the email that was previous to this failure was restored, item by item. So the fix, sorry, getting ahead of myself, the outage, try to skip right over that. The change meant to improve the service, triggered a failure which was not reversible. The email server stopped communicating. That, the issue came, the exchange server is so integrated into our network that rebuilding it would have taken far longer and caused far more issues that would have lasted the lifetime of those servers. In other words, we would see issues for years. It would have cost us more by getting Microsoft even further involved, and it would have taken far longer to recover than the option we finally took, which was moving to the new system, the Office 365. Beyond that, of course, it was far from certain to work. We could have ended up doing that anyway, and wasting even more money trying to recover. So the basics are, we attempted to recover the system, our vendor was working with Microsoft to do that, and Microsoft gave up on the recovery. They wanted far more money and more time to get it done, and we just didn't have that time or the funds. So next, we'll talk about the fix. So we created the new email organization on a cloud-based system called Microsoft Office 365. We pointed our DNS records to the new system, which allows all users to get email again. And the DNS records are just like the world's way of finding you. So it's like when you move and you send the post office a change of address, then the post office knows where to deliver your mail. Then we manually restored the pre-outage emails, as I mentioned. One note about that, those happened one item by one, which takes forever, especially if you're our Deputy City Manager, and you've been here 28 years. It takes a long time to get your emails back. So after doing that, of course, one note here as well, we do not believe that any emails were lost. That's because we have an archive device that archives every email coming in and going out of the city. That's separate from this system. We also have a separate spam filter service on the front end that receives all email, and if the servers have any sort of problem, it sits and holds email until we're back up and running, it can deliver those emails. And of course, we were working very in-depth with users on everything to make sure that, through their feedback, that we found out we didn't lose any of major emails. Now, as Ron had pointed out to me, to be clear, we did have issues after this. Obviously, you all probably know that. We worked out some issues, but we do not believe we lost any data in the end. We had to recreate a few things, you know, redo some of our calendar items. And moving on from that, so moving forward, we're working with our IT vendor to implement some more redundancy and resiliency with our systems. Part of that, of course, is moving to the cloud. We're also working to increase our IT team's technical knowledge. We do that through several methods, free training, we cross-train with each other on systems, we work with our vendors to get training, we sometimes do paid training when we have to. And another note, there is, there are over 234 applications in the city, and four technicians working on this. So it is somewhat overwhelming sometimes, but through this process, I think we handle it pretty well. We also have a formalized change management procedure now, to ensure that best practices are followed. Catch up to this. And we train our IT staff on the change management application. Last year, we purchased an application to help with this, which was also our Help Desk application. We did it in a phased implementation, so we implemented the service desk first, then the change management. We're also moved to that email cloud-based system, as I mentioned earlier, that has multiple servers around the Americas for redundancy, and ideally, no data loss, of course, and the outages should be very minimal. So some benefits of the new system license we have now, we have new tools like Teams, which is an online meeting application, and we hope to be able to replace the current application that we pay for to do that, the go-to meeting that you're all familiar with probably by now. We were also, we were planning to move to Office 365 anyway. This just accelerated our plan. Unfortunately, you never like to move in an emergency, but it's good that we already had the plan in place, at least. And we will reuse those email servers that are now obsolete from moving to the online system. So now, the hard part, the cost. The one-time cost for the service that we got from our IT vendor was $29,747.65. That was virtually all labor. There's also a recurring license cost to the Microsoft licenses of $28,800 per year. That's an estimate. What it basically is, is eight dollars a month per user. We're estimating based on the number of users and mailboxes we have. And how we mitigated that cost, we currently have a support contract with our IT vendor that has $20,300 left through this fiscal year. We've also renegotiated our phone system support contract, that saved us $2,700. We have several other ways we can save money in our budget by not doing certain things, or pushing off, for instance, new computers, that sort of thing, that can actually wait. We did push a few projects off, like our phone system project, that can be done in 2022 if we need to. And we are negotiating with our Microsoft Applications vendor, which we get all of our other licensing from, to get a little more advantageous pricing based on our volume we do. Having said that, I would take any questions you have.
Any questions for Mr. Carter?
I did, just one briefly. Mr. Carter, first of all, this was an unfortunate event, but I do appreciate you and your department's response, and getting us back up and running as quickly as you did, under the circumstances and with our budgetary concerns. Mr. Corbin, you know, I'm not very technologically savvy, but he tried to explain that this isn't just a standard Microsoft 365, it's one for government, or it's government pricing, or something along those lines. Can you explain that a little bit more, please?
So the government license, we, it takes normally, I believe, three to five days to get that authorization as a government. They are claiming due to COVID that it would take far longer. So what we did is, we went to the E1 license, which is a standard Microsoft license, and we will move to that government license sometime, either this year or early next fiscal year.
Pricing better than for that, the latter type of license?
Yes, sorry. It was eight dollars a month for the license we've got, and it will be twelve dollars a month for the other licenses, but we'll be able to couple all of our office licenses within that. And I did forget to mention what Ron wanted me to mention, which is, the point of pointing out all of the costs was that we believe we can get the actual hit to this year's budget under $10,000 overall.
Mayor, can I ask for one more statement on the government? What's the other benefit to the government? There was something about server location?
Yes, so currently with our E1 license, E as in Edward, one license, that means all of the servers are somewhere in the Americas, which means Central America, South America, North America. With the government license, because it has to meet the government standards for security, that all the servers are within North America.
Which lends itself to my question, are we more secure now than we were, and then when we go with the other license, the government license, we will be even more secure, correct?
Yes. So one thing I would want to make clear about this, is this was not an outside cyber attack. This was us trying to improve our service, and things happened. It's a growing pain, as I had pointed out to our city manager. As you professionalize and as you grow, things can happen when you try to improve service.
Mr. Mayor, can I add on to that, too? Can you explain, we meet all security requirements for our police department, for our human resources department, our banking, it meets all the security needs of all of our outside partners, and rules, and laws, and...
Yes, so the Office 365 environment that we've gone to, this and the government license both meet the SEJIS requirements, and they also meet the cybersecurity requirements that we have for all of our interactions with the court system, the all-money-handling PCI compliance, all that sort of thing. It does meet that, because it encrypts the data in transmission, as well as at rest, which is, as you all know, we've had a cybersecurity program for a year now, and been very lucky, I'm sure, and very vigilant with this.
Any other questions? Just curious, what are you going to use those email servers for, like wood chippers or paper shredders?
Expensive wood chippers, about $43,000 a piece.
Thanks.
No, and they won't be used for doorstops either. We've already earmarked one for data protection within the city. We've, like everyone, we always balance our budget risk versus what we're going to get out of the systems. So it is good in that respect that we have servers now to use for more data protection. That's one server. One server we're probably going to use in the phone system setup that we're looking to do. We're looking to make all of our phone systems one phone system.
All right, very good. Well, thanks, I really appreciate the update on that.
Thank you.
Nice to be back.
Thank you all.
Back online again, thank you. All right, let's see, next up is approval of minutes of the regular meeting of November 17, 2020, and I'd motion to approve those minutes.
A question, though, on that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I apologize, because we do, so city clerk, we do have a highlighted section, and I didn't quite remember the minutes to read, as the highlighted section indicates on page 12. So I did, before we move to approve these, just want to see if my memory doesn't serve with Mr. Mungini's comment in the highlighted section. And I don't know if there's some comment from our city clerk on that?
No, not at this time. It was just a mistake that was highlighted, so it shouldn't have been highlighted.
I did think he said he did not think it was important to have fire protection, and then he went on to explain the reasons why, hence that garden hose. But again, if this looks accurate to my fellow council members, then...
He said that, he did.
So that, it is not...
He did not think it was because of the fire hoses, the hoses.
Correct.
He thought.
I can go back and correct it and present it on the next meeting.
Okay, then with that, then I think we did have a motion, a second. I apologize for the interruption, but that clarifies it, thank you.
Okay, then do we, do we want to, motion to approve with that clarification, or do you want to bring it back for a future meeting?
If that is consistent with everybody's recollection...
It is with mine.
Approving with that clarification, and I would so move.
Okay.
Second?
Councilmember Henry made the motion, Councilmember Narin seconded it, and then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, it's approved. Good catch. Excuse me, unfinished business, we have one item tonight under unfinished business, ordinance number 688, amending the zoning ordinance by adding a new section 409 recreational vehicle parks and manufactured home parks, and amending sections 410, 411, 417, 418, 419, 423, and 425. This is the second final reading. I see Mr. Davis is on standby here, but again, I think we've gone over this in quite amount of detail in the past, and I don't know if there's any questions or concerns from council? No? Okay. Then I would move to approve, I should ask, is there anyone in the public this evening that would like to comment on this item? All right, I'll go ahead, motion to approve ordinance number 688.
Second?
All right, Mayor, may the motion, Councilmember Halls seconded it, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Halls?
Yes.
Councilmember Carratt?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Councilmember Weldon?
Yes.
Mayor Olensky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, deputy clerk, please read ordinance number 688 by title only.
Ordinance number 688, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the zoning ordinance by adding a new section 409 recreational vehicle parks and manufactured home parks, and amending sections 410, 411, 417, 418, 419, 423, and 425. Mayor?
All right, thank you. Next up is consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council, and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items, unless a council member or citizen so requests. So we have two items tonight under the consent agenda. The first item is liquor license application submitted by Justin W. Vitarello, applicant for Fodril Brothers, located at 777 North Main Street. And item two is consideration of possible approval of proposed one Arizona opioid litigation settlement, MOU. Are there any items that a council member or member of the public would like to have pooled? Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second?
Okay, Councilmember Halls made the motion, and Councilmember Narin seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it's approved. Now we go into new business, following items are for council discussion, consideration of possible legal action. Up first is consideration of fiscal year 2021 employee compensation program. Oh, sure, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council, I'm Kirsten Lennon, the Financial Services Director here at the City of Cottonwood.
Kirsten, can I interrupt for a second, please?
Hey.
Matt, do we have the attorney on line? So I just wanted to make sure council was aware, I know you are, Mr. Mayor, that we do have a outside attorney through Justin Pierce's firm on the line, if you do have legal questions.
Thank you.
I can't answer legal questions. Tonight, we're asking you to consider 2021... I can't answer legal questions. Tonight, we're asking you to consider 2021 employee compensation program. The intent was that we did not budget really or plan on any compensation this year besides our normal salaries, and in the past we have. If you read through the history, you can see that we have done, had done a merit program for many, many years. And in 2020 and 2021, we eliminated that program completely, and we only did a COLA of 2% in one of those years. We also have done cost of living adjustments in the past. We've done several in the last couple of years, like four or five since 2014. And those were all small percentages, 1% to 2% increases for employees. And this year, we just, due to COVID and some other things, we decided not to consider any of that. And when we looked at the fiscal year ending numbers for 2020, our revenues were higher than projected. We actually came in at 1.3 million sales tax over the budgeted amount. So what happens is that money gets rolled over into the new year as fund balance. Our fund balance figures also increased for our general fund by $3 million. So there is some revenue available to cover the cost. We also had a very flexible budget made that allowed for some growth. So we made sure that we had enough expenditure limitation so that if something did occur, if our revenues came in better, and we had the ability to give an employee compensation, that we would have that as part of our budget dollars. So we have enough budget authority to do this. So at this time, what we're requesting is to be able to do a 4% COLA to all full-time staff, including contract staff, which is why Steve Horton stepped back, because he's a contract employee. And then to do a 2% for our part-time staff, who have not really had any increases besides the state mandated minimum wage increases. And then we also, for those part-time, if they were close to the or above the minimum wage when it moved up, we didn't move them up. So if they were already at 12, when it went to 12, we didn't increase theirs to 1215 or 1250. We left them at 12. So this is just a way to add to the compensation. We would do this as two one-time payments, not something that would continue from year to year. So every year, this won't grow. This will just be two one-time payments in this fiscal year that they will receive, one in December and one in January, to help with taxes for them, to get the January one. And then that will be it for the year, and then we'll bring back to you anything for next fiscal year as part of the budget process.
All right. Counsel? Did you have anything else to add, Ron? Counsel, any questions for Kirsten? Thoughts?
I think this has been a very challenging year for everyone, including all of our city staff. And since this is not something that would happen every year, and we can do something different for the next fiscal year, I feel like it's a great idea to appreciate our staff in this way.
Okay.
I did ask, excuse me, a couple of questions of Kirsten and Ron regarding, do we have the money? And they answered that question, yes, we do. And secondly, I also asked how many employees, part-time and full-time, were laid off. And that was answered to my super satisfaction. And if anybody wants to ask those questions again, feel free. But I'm also comfortable with this.
So I agree with Councilmember Nairn about, I really appreciate, in this pandemic, how our city staff have just really just been wonderful from my perspective and from all reports. So thank you. I would just like, if we can, to have a clear record of any gift of public funds concerns, especially for our contract employees, and I believe that is why you do have our attorney on the line. But apart from being assured that there is no legal concern there, I absolutely agree with the item at hand.
I just would concur that I agree with the rest of the council members. I think it's a nice benefit that we can give at this time. We were planning on doing a cost of living. We couldn't do it because of Corona. Now we have an opportunity to make that up, and I think it's a nice gesture, and at the right time of year.
And Councilmember Clorot, did you want to add anything?
I think it's a great idea.
Sorry?
I think it's a great idea.
Okay, good. All right. Well, Mr. Pierce, I know you're on the line. If you wouldn't mind answering, and I hope you heard Councilmember Henry's question.
I did. This is Kylie Tenbrock. Sorry to disappoint.
Sorry. I didn't know who was on the line. I apologize.
Yes, I did. I don't know, do we want to move into executive session, or?
We are not in executive session. I think just a clarification on the gift clause of the revised statutes would be helpful.
Okay. So with the gift clause, and do you want me to go into whether or not it would be a legal payment?
Correct.
Okay. So under the gift clause, I conducted some research, and it appears that these would not violate the gift clause. Generally, a public expenditure will be upheld if it has a public purpose, and the consideration is not grossly disproportionate to what the city gets in return. Public purpose and determining what that is, is pretty broadly defined and is really left to, given great deference to the legislative body through the courts. So in some of the case law that I reviewed, I found that a public purpose includes trying to keep employees in employment, adjusting for cost of living increases, which it sounds like that's part of what you guys want to do here. And so the public purpose, I think, is probably going to be served there. When we talk about whether the consideration is out of balance, we take a look at it as a whole. And I found some opinions from the Attorney General saying that where you're trying to retain employees and getting these kinds of payments, you know, hundreds and even sometimes thousands of dollars paid to an employee does not outweigh the consideration. And some of the things to take into consideration there are the fact that if you had to replace these employees because you suffered from poor retention, then you would have the costs incurred in training and hiring and all those things. The second piece of, and that's as applied to the employees. When we talk about the contract employees, we're talking about the extra compensation clause. And generally, that doesn't allow the increase of pay for any public official during their term of office. But the case law on that makes clear that if an employee serves at the will of the legislative body, if they're appointed, and they can be terminated for cause, or for any reason without cause, then there's no violation of the extra compensation clause. So there would be no violation of the extra compensation clause here by paying your contracted employees those sums, as long as they are at will.
All right. That clears things up. Thank you. And thanks for being on the call. Appreciate it.
No problem.
All right. And does that answer your questions?
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. And again, I agree. I think, you know, when Ron came on board, he demanded a lot of his employees, and things have moved at the speed of Ron, as we now see. But with COVID coming on, it changed things a lot, and we pushed even harder and asked even more of our employees. And everyone has stepped up. And really, I'm proud of our community, of all of our employees to rise to the occasion and give it even more than you were before. And I think this is really, we're in a fortunate position here in the city of Cottonwood that we're able to, and again, we are a frugal council, and so we should, you know, we're responsible, I think, too, with our management team to have brought the budget in under what we expected and to have this surplus. And we're in a fortunate position. I think it's proper to share that with those who are on the front line, serving our communities and do right by them. So I would agree with the rest of the council on this item. And I would entertain a motion. Councilmember Wildin?
Yes. I move to approve a 4% compensation payment to city full-time staff and 2% to part-time staff in fiscal year 2021.
Second?
All right. Councilmember Wildin made the motion. We had Councilmember Clorot second it. If we could get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Clorot?
Yes.
Councilmember Nairn?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildin?
Yes.
Mayor Olensky?
Yes.
And motion carried.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, as our city attorney walks back in, I was quiet because I thought Kirsten did a great job of presentation, and I wanted to stay out of any mix of my own salary. But thank you. The team, the city of Cottonwood staff has been working very hard. We made a commitment to them during the budget process that if revenues changed, if they came in better than expected, that we would reconsider this and bring it back to this governing body. And so I just want to say thank you on behalf of the employees for keeping our word and you guys coming through for us. So thank you.
All right. The second item tonight under new business is discussion, consideration, and possible legal action authorizing staff to commission an employee market compensation study. We have Ms. Wilver.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Excuse me. I'm Amanda Wilver, the HR director, and Ron beat me to it. I was definitely going to say, on behalf of our employees, thank you. We do have very hardworking employees, and they really are dedicated to making our community a better place. So thank you for considering and approving the last item. I'm here to talk to you tonight, however, about conducting an employee compensation market study through an outside firm. So as you know, this was part of our flexible budget, that if we didn't have the funds, we weren't going to ask for it. If we did feel we had the funds, we would come back and ask for approval to move forward with this. The last employee compensation study that we did here at the city was conducted in fiscal year 2012 and implemented in 2013. Since that time, we have done a pretty good job of trying to increase our ranges with our cost of living adjustments as they were implemented. However, not all positions move in the market at the same rate as a COLA does. So, you know, as an example, maybe our IT jobs, even though they were placed in, you know, a specific range, and we've done a good job increasing that range over time, that might not be where they really fall within the market today. So it has been about seven or eight years since we've done that, and things do change for specific positions within their own market. So by conducting the market study, we would ensure that all of our positions fall where they need to fall, within our ranges that we have established. This would allow us to compare our positions with other cities and towns, compare within each individual field, and then also take a look inside our organization again and make sure everything lines up how we feel it really should be lining up. If council allows us to move forward with this project, it would be just allowing us to move forward with the plan. The plan itself would be brought back to council at a later date to implement, hopefully for next fiscal year. Like I mentioned, this was part of our flexible budget, so we did hope that this would be able to be brought back to you at a later date. And right now, we are expecting that the study would not exceed $40,000. In fact, it would probably be less than that. $40,000, we feel, is a safe amount to cap that at. So with that, any questions, I'm happy to answer, but we are asking for approval to move forward with the process.
Questions from council?
What kind of information is this study actually going to give us? And is it to find new staff, or is it to adjust what we're paying current staff?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Clorot, if I can take that. So the market study does a couple of things for you, and we're asking for a couple of extra. So we are not doing a classification study, so we're not going in, sometimes you do an overhaul, and you have them come in, you look at every position, you have them look at job descriptions, and you really get into the weeds. That's not what we're asking of this time. What we're asking for is salaries. So they'll usually prepare two sets of data on salaries. They'll give you compare ranges to ranges of comparable cities based on all sorts of factors, the size of the city, the services provided, the number of management, the attraction. So if we're losing, you know, if we're losing positions to another organization, even though it's bigger than us, we might compare to that. But it compares ranges to ranges, which usually means we look at the midpoint, because everybody starts a little low but ends a little high, you know, it's all different. So what they do is they take the ranges of each classification and compare it to the midpoint of other ranges. Normally, what they'll also provide is actual salaries. So they'll, we've both, as HR people, have responded to many of these, and you actually provide them your actual salary data. And so then what they'll do is they'll all use the firefighters. They will take all of our firefighters and find the average that our firefighters are making, and then they'll compare that to the average range, or the average salary of the firefighters at another city or town or district. So they'll, two numbers, one is midpoint range to midpoint range, and then actual salaries to actual salary averages. I'll work with the consultant and the team to, you know, kind of present that data in the most transparent light and make recommendations. There are pros and cons to both. One of the things that we are asking our consultants to fix is our ranges. So years ago, they asked the consultants to do something special with our ranges, and I don't know how to really describe it correctly, but it almost creates a false bottom. So we don't use the bottom 25% of our range, and that does a couple of things. That helps us in recruitment, so it makes our starting salaries comparable and attractive to other folks. But what it does is it artificially lowers the midpoint. So remember, I only have the hiring authority up to the midpoint of any range without coming to council. It keeps the hiring range lower than it actually should be if you're using your actual starting to your actual max. So I'm asking them to fix that. I don't want a false bottom. If we need to hire someone at the 25th percentile, then we have the ability to do that on an as-needed basis. So I'm having them fix that. And then they'll do the ranges, actual salary comparisons, and then we also ask for benefit data. So they'll collect benefit data. That often comes into play. I've done bargaining units for police unions, and, you know, employees look at benefits. So they'll look at time off, they'll look at reimbursement for uniforms, they'll look at...
Health insurance.
Health insurance rates. Some cities contribute a lot more than we do, some contribute a lot less than we do, depending on the benefit. You know, we provide free healthcare to our employees only, and then we have a sliding scale on contributions for the other parts. So they'll look through all those benefits. So that's the three big things, salaries, benefits, and our range, our structure fix. And then they usually tweak things here and there and help us do things. One of the things about these market studies is it's about 80% science and about 20% art, because you can't always just use comparables. So in some places, for example, the assistant, too, might be the highest, the highest classification in a certain range. In another organization, it might be lower. So you have to look at your own organization and where you put it. So there's a little bit of tweaking that goes in that, but that'll all come back to council for approval as we do. So they'll help us make those decisions that are valid, based in science, and then adjusted for our organization depending on usually SKAs, your skills, knowledge, and abilities, and those kinds of years of experience, and all the requirements that we put. Some people have very little requirements for SKAs for experience, and others have greater. So they help us fix all that or address all of those issues.
And will that be for every position we have, part-time, full-time, and contract?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, councilmember, I almost said Wildin, sorry. Councilmember Nairn, no. So what we'll do is we'll pick a group of positions, because the more you do, the more it costs, and the less likely you are to get full results from other cities and towns who have to help do the data. So we'll pick a group, 50 to 60%, I think is about.
Yeah, that's what some of the consultants...
Are recommending. Usually you do 50 to 60%, and then you make adjustments to the other ones as needed. For an example, a lot of places I came from have utility workers, one, two, and three. You don't study all three. You pick the one that's most common, the one you can find the most comparables on, and then you make the adjustments to the others. Same thing with our part-time... Same thing with our part-time employees, we'll make them adjustments based on, you know, a lot of factors. I can tell you that we'll be studying transit drivers and a lot of those are part-time. So, that's a part-time employee that we will, you know, be studying. So, it just, we'll work with the leadership team to pick out about 50 to 60% of the positions and then we make adjustments based on other criteria.
Contract employees.
And contract employees?
Yes. It will include all four of your contract employees, given the specialty of their positions, city manager, city attorney, the magistrate, and the city clerk. Those are common positions, easy to find, easy to get that data. So, I can't imagine those positions not being studied.
Thank you.
Any other questions, thoughts from council?
And I know we've been asking, we've been discussing this market study for a while. I just have concerns now that the timing is a bit off. We heard that it's meant to address current positions as well as recruiting. I do see the value right now as far as recruiting moving forward. I just have concerns that if we have the study and it shows that significant adjustments are necessary in a variety of our positions, we don't have the budget right now to implement that. It doesn't seem like, I mean, I don't know what the numbers are, but just speculating. I'm concerned with the latest, you know, just with the pandemic and what our revenues, I know we're up and we're happy about that, but I just don't know that right now a market study is our biggest priority. But I do, again, I appreciate the value, but I don't want to get a study and then not be able to implement it until we need new data, you know, in a couple more budgets once we're in a better position. But again, that's just my thought.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Henry, if I can just talk briefly about that. I've been doing this either in HR or in this role for numbers of years and I've seen all the pitfalls of doing a market study and then not implementing anything, but I've never found a good time to do a market study. Since I've been in government service, now Rudy's been in it a little bit longer, he's probably seen the good times, but if it wasn't the 2008, it took years, you know, just there's never a really a good time. But one of the things that I hear in recruitment, and we have a couple of positions, we have our police officer positions, which we have struggles recruiting and retaining. Utility workers is another big one we have significant issues in. Drivers is another issue, transit drivers, communications. Everybody goes to salaries and I'm not, that's not usually my first gut, it's not salaries. But a study helps us determine if it is or isn't. And so the commitment I make to you that is, whatever the implementation is, we'll come to you, not asking you to figure out how to budget it, but we will budget it or postpone it or do it. I've seen it done a couple of different ways. The way you implement it also alters the cost. So, those are all the factors. I've seen it implemented where there's no employee adjustments unless they're below the minimum. And in those cases, it's usually very inexpensive to implement. I've seen full, what we call step ownership, where you move, if your position moves 5%, your salary moves 5%. That's actually not the normal and that's only done in great years. I've seen it done where you apply a formula to years of experience because not as much in the City of Cottonwood, but in when I worked at Oro Valley, we had years of no raises. So, I'll use our police officers in that position that was on a step program. We had four-year officers in step two and we had one-year employees moving into step two. So, there were some significant compression issues. So, you apply a formula that gives years of credit service, lowers the total cost of what I call step ownership. There are many ways to do this. I've also seen it implemented over three to four years, you know, because you might do the COLA in the middle of that, a one or two or whatever the percent is COLA because you can't afford to do the adjustment and you do that at the next year. So, there's always ways to do it. You will do it the best way within our budget that makes the impact we needed to make, which is to help with recruitment and retention. But I, but I think that there's, because I've been in a few organizations, it doesn't have to be done at the diamond level where it's very expensive. It can be done in ways and over multiple years that can make it more affordable. I also think that getting it built into our base budget, so I think in the next year, we're going to begin to know what our base budget is. So, as you mentioned earlier, over the last couple of years, we've reduced staff. We've made cuts in departments, we have not filled positions, we have moved people around. One of the things that I tell people about their jobs is we're a small organization, we have to act like it. So, I think of one of my, you know, new favorite employees, Lorinda, who works in my office part-time. So, she works for the airport, she works at my front desk, and she works in parks and rec. We're a small organization, we do multiple things. So, there's a couple of positions we're going to need to add next year that I'm going to try to fit into the budget and create this space. It would be nice to have the known or the need known for the salaries that is going to create this ongoing base budget. So, there's a little bit of logic for me to try to get it done this year to be able to implement or at least know what my goal is for next year as we figure out the right size of the organization. We're not quite there yet. We're still, I don't know that we're over in many departments, one or two departments. We've got a couple more adjustments we could make. It's getting very slim to not, but there's a couple of departments that are cut too thin and so we need to add some of those back and fix that. So, it would, it would come into my calculation in making a recommended, recommended budget for the next year. Again, we, you know, we can put it off, we'll ask again next year, but again, even with the adjustments you just approved in this, we're still at about 650. We're 1.3 over. That still allows, in the excess sales tax alone, it will allow almost $600,000 to go into reserves, which I know is a main goal. And that's in addition to the other reserves that were built in the other areas of the revenue. So, while I can't make a forecast on what this will cost to implement, I can't make that forecast, I don't know. I actually think we have several positions that are at market, especially once we make the correct adjustment for the correct midpoint. There are some positions, like I mentioned earlier, we struggle to fill. Doesn't mean they're not at market, but I sure would like to know.
I don't think we need to pay $40,000 for a study to be able to say our transit drivers are not at market. I think we can look at our local market. Of course, now that might change with the suspension of certain bus services, but I think that one, again, I don't know that we need to pay somebody to tell us that we need to bring them up. So, my only concern, again, I'm not against the market study itself, but where we are in uncertain times, I just wonder if the timing of this priority is absolutely necessary. But you did hit an important point. So, is the market study going to help with your right, I mean, apart from the numbers, are they providing any analysis about right sizing the organization?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Henry, we're not asking them to analyze the organizational size, no. So, we're not asking that. What they're doing is helping me know how close to market we are and how much future adjustments I'm going to need, if I need to make any drastic changes to those. The biggest problem I have that it will fix is our structure. When I look at our midpoint and compare it to other midpoints, so we get an annual salary report from the League of Cities and Towns that is so-so because it doesn't, they don't study the comparators, they just take what everybody turns in. So, when you look at accountant and an accountant, we may be turning in something very different than Goodyear turns in for their accountant and our market study would help us analyze to make sure we're comparing apples to apples. But what it'll do is right size, that's not the right word, appropriately place the midpoint mathematically correct between our actual starting salaries and our high end. It'll make that adjustment and then make the comparison. And at the end of the day, I think that we have many positions that are probably at market or very close to market, but there are some that aren't. The problem with transit is I actually think our salary is at market based on, you know, maybe bus driving and some other issues and we're still having issues. The market study would help us determine that because they're going to go outside of the Verde Valley to get some of that information. So, this is one of those cases for transit drivers, a great example, and feel free to cut me off, Mayor, so we can move on, but this is my heart and soul, not that I'm begging for the study, but the study itself, is that it's not, we may be at market for transit drivers, but it's not enough to help us attract our part-time. So, this is one of those cases where I may, when I come back to council or when Amanda has the privilege of coming back to council to present this, she might say, okay, this came in at market, but we're recommending that we place it three grades higher so that we can do a better job of attracting and retraining transit drivers. You know, during the COVID, we had to cut night services to our links system. We just didn't have enough backup to help us get through that. It's just struggling, as you know, the school district recently shut down their bus services for the same kind of issues. So, we may be at market, it may say, you know, our consultant come back and say, you're at market, but we may have to say, and our recommendation to council may be higher grades just because of the problems we're having attracting and retraining those. That's that art, that 20% I was talking about, is we have to take our norms and our known problems and issues and good and bad and work them into the study.
How often should a study be done like this in an organization our size? And I ask because I don't know, because I don't think we've ever really kept up with these market studies the way we should.
Last one was in 2012.
And in your experience, Ron, how often?
Three to five years. That's how some positions can swing, whether it be IT. When we came back from the downturn in 2008, 2009, we found that police officer positions were skyrocketing because the City of Phoenix didn't hire for a couple of years and they had like 100 vacancies. DPS hadn't hired for a couple of years. So, their salaries were increasing, so we, and this was in Yuma, were losing significantly, so those were outpacing the norm. So, three to five years gives you a good baseline, lets you know. It also makes the adjustment less painful. The longer you wait, the bigger the gap and the more painful it is to implement. Now, one of the great things that the City of Cottonwood does is over the years you've done COLAs where you've adjusted the ranges and I think that'll help us. That's why I'm not afraid of this number because it's not that it's been eight years since you've done a study and not done any adjusting. So, there have been great adjustments along the way, so.
Yeah, I'm concerned too about doing a study that we can't fund, you know, but I know that there are ways we can still implement the plan with a scaled entry into the, you know, funding it and all that. So, I think it's, I think it's overdue. I remember serving in the past when we had put it off for a long time and it did cause issues in our organization. I hate to see us get back in that routine. Yeah.
I'll go back to the CDL or the transit driver since you brought that up. We require a CDL for that, right?
Correct. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember McCrout, yes.
So, another thing, like even with the automotive industry, we try comparing to other shops, we're not comparing to the skill set. So, somebody with a CDL can go to, we use Patriot as an example, making three times the money and is that study going to show that or is it just going to compare what we're paying our bus driver to what Phoenix is paying the bus driver?
Very good. So, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember McCrout, that goes back to the original question, why we can't depend on the league? Because that's what the league does, they just give you numbers. The study looks at the requirements and they will weed out things. So, they might have the number there, but they'll tell you, don't count this one because it doesn't require a CDL or it doesn't require licensure or it doesn't require a degree or if, and I'm not even recommending Phoenix for the City of Cottonwood, but sometimes we would use Phoenix for certain positions and then reduce it by 10% because size alone, you know, span of management and those kinds of things. That's where a good consultant, and we have three quotes in and they're all from reputable people who've done this in Arizona and studied, you know, government, they'll understand that. But great question, that's one of the reasons we do a market study and don't just use off-the-shelf studies.
Tried asking staff what they would want as far as salary. So, like I know their first answer is going to be they want a million dollars a year. Everybody wants a million dollars a year, but their second answer might be more realistic where we can put that 40,000 more towards salary and training versus a study we can't afford to do anything with.
So, I have to be, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember McCrout, I don't know that I've ever asked them what they wanted to be paid. But when we talk about salaries, so at some point, we'll have the leadership team meeting and we'll begin to talk to employees about the results or the findings. We'll have them look at the comparators, maybe we missed a licensure thing. We'll bring employees in at some point. The only time, I take that back, the only time I've done that is negotiating contracts with MOUs with the police union. And they are very clear about not only what they want to make, but their progression and their benefits and all those wonderful things. So, yes, I've done that in those kinds of cases, but I think the organizational culture that we've had over the last couple of years is there's a clear understanding that this is a conservative council and that we're going to live within our means and we're going to increase our reserves and we're going to get paid a fair wage and we're going to, you know, receive the benefits of giving 100% from this council. So, I'm not afraid of really asking that question. I just think that we get to that without asking that question directly through the process.
And I think that's a fair question that should be asked in every interview process, especially if we have staff that or candidates that say we are not taking this position because of the money. Now, when I work with clients for recruiting, we always ask, what's your desired salary range? And I understand it's different for, again, some of our hourly and some of our city positions where we've got the range there, but again, they know what the range is. And so if they say, no, that's not enough money, I think it would be fair to follow up and say, well, what is an expected amount for this area?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Henry, so I can think of one position in the organization where we've, since I've come on, we've debated that range a little bit and it's clearly not enough. I think when that person was hired before I got here, there was an expectation that there would be merits, that there would be COLAs and that he would, you know, this individual would range and whatnot would move. So, we do have that conversation early on. We talk about midpoint, we talk about this is the most you're going to get and, you know, and there's no guaranteed raises. We currently make those very known in our, in our hiring process now that this is where it's at and there's no promise or guarantee of any future compensation. And then we do what we can to be fair and honest and it hasn't really been a problem for us and the people that we've hired. We have lost either candidates or applicants, either for salary or benefits and those, those kinds of things. And so that, when you asked Councilmember McCrout about what it provides, the benefit's very helpful because I can tell you that currently very few cities pay 100% of healthcare insurance for employees only. That is becoming less norm and so we brag about that when we bring on employees. So, even if our salary is, is average or, you know, right where they need it to be, sometimes the health benefits get some over the edge. The other thing is sometimes for, depending on the position, the car allowance helps us, we have all sorts of ways. That's why I say, when we talk about retention issues, when we talk about recruitment issues, as a former recovering HR director, I do not jump to salaries right off the bat. There's usually a lot of issues. The market study is just one of those tools that helps us prove that the salary is right at market. We're never going to be Phoenix, we're never going to be some of the other departments. That's not our goal. And normally, the range is we try to be average. So, when we come back with recommendations, it's not to be at the top of the pack, it's usually just to be at market.
Can I add something? I just want to echo, we do have those conversations when we do the hiring process, you know, people do know upfront what our hiring range is. People call us before they're even applying to ask those questions. So, we are very upfront with people, you know, early on in the process. I think that the bigger issue is once you are an employee and people did get used to merits, you know, right or wrong, there are people who are disappointed that that, we are where we are right now. I've heard numerous times, people were willing to accept less in our initial offer because they, they value the benefits that we do have, they knew that we are very stable. So, that is something that has factored into where we're at right now.
One thing I'd like to mention is, as we know, COVID's going to get worse. So, I'm a little uncomfortable with doing this now. Can we put it off? We don't have to put it off for a year, two years. Can this come back semi-soon, beginning in part of the year? I would be more comfortable with that, talking about it, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Wildin, are you talking about doing the study or?
Not doing the study now.
No.
Putting it off for a little bit.
So, at the pleasure of the council, we'll do it whenever we're allowed to do it and approved. We do, this is a one-time expenditure, we do have the one-time expenditures now. So, the only really cost that I don't know and whether we can afford it or not is the implementation. And as your city manager, I'm not going to recommend an implementation that we can't afford. We need to know at some point. Again, I'd rather know sooner rather than later, it takes a couple of months to do it. We probably- We probably won't get these results back towards the end of the budget process. So I'd like to get it in before the end of the budget process so that I can calculate anything in into the next year. But again, this is at the pleasure of council. Can we live without it? Absolutely. We'll keep plugging forward and do what we do best, which is, you know, make things happen for the great citizens of Cottonwood. This is just a tool that I would like to help us get to the right spot, I guess. We can afford it, it's well within that 1.3 million. We're probably talking less than 20,000 for the study if we go with the lowest bid. There's two bids that are pretty close. I haven't read them yet to see what they're offering and what they're excluding or will be add-ons, you know, you always got to read the fine print in those contracts. But again, at the pleasure of council, we'll do it whenever we're allowed to do it. But can we afford the study? Absolutely. We had it in our budget, you know, we had it as an alternative in our budget. It's in there, we have the funds, and then it's up to me to come back to council with a recommended implementation plan.
Any other thoughts, comments, concerns, questions?
Well, I just want to say, I understand the concerns of other council members, but over the last couple of years with Mr. Corbin and understanding how frugal this council is, I believe that he won't bring anything back to us as a result of this study unless we can truly afford it and he thinks it's in the best interest of the city. So I would be comfortable giving him the tools he needs to do that in the future, understanding that that might be a year or two down the line, depending on how COVID and everything goes.
I'd like to see the salary schedule studies done. I know the PD is struggling with keeping quality officers. And at this moment in time with what's going on across our country, we have opportunities to bring in lateral entry officers with background, with experience. It saves us the training of a new recruit, going through the processes of trying to figure out whether or not they'll be successful. We consider what we might pay more for an officer versus what we pay for training and then lose an officer because they don't meet our qualifications. That's one area where I think we need to be investigating and improving our salary range to attract quality officers that we can maintain. We've had a lot of good officers come for a few years and then go somewhere else for various reasons. I would leave that up to the chief to say why the officers are changing departments, but it seems to me that we're having trouble maintaining officers. We always have several openings. And it's not good for us, it's not good for them. I would be in favor of finding out what it's going to take for us to maintain, not just the police department, but all of our departments, maintain people. You would have a better idea of our turnover citywide, because you deal with it, but the departments that are experiencing large turnover, we need to know why. Is it salary or is it other problems that need to be addressed?
Generally, it is a mix. And the turnover numbers are submitted in the management, not in the management report, in the monthly report. So if you would like to see those again, I can send those out again, definitely. But, I mean, we have a pretty consistently moderately high turnover rate, I would say, and it is dependent upon departments. Some have a much higher turnover rate than others. Sometimes it's money, sometimes it's not, but sometimes it's multiple factors and money does factor into that as well.
Right. So we waste a lot of money if we hire people who don't stay, because we're just continually turning over new employees. And I would like to see us have a salary scale for all of our employees that is somewhere within the median. We have a lot of reasons for people to move here versus Phoenix or Tucson or Flagstaff, but we have to pay them a salary that's commensurate with their experience and their job requirements.
Mr. Mayor, I'll real quick add just one thing. Utilities is probably what, PD's a concern, number of officers, you know, different issues there, but in our utilities, we've had a lot of turnover there and attracting highly-qualified employees that want to work in our wastewater department is hard. And it would be really nice to have a good study done in that department specifically across the board. But I know that a lot of focus gets on our public safety, rightfully so, but one of my bigger concerns is, or one of my additional concerns is the utility department.
All right, let's bring the ship into the harbor here. And would anyone like to make a vote?
Yeah. I moved to authorize staff to move forward with an employee compensation market study contracting with the firm for an amount not to exceed $40,000.
Second?
All right, Councilmember Naren made the motion and Councilmember Hulse seconded it. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
No.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrat?
No.
Councilmember Naren?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilden?
Yes.
Mayor Alinsky?
Yes.
And motion carried.
Very good. Thank you, council staff.
Thank you.
All right, item three is a waiver of procurement policy and authorization to purchase arsenic removal equipment and materials from Ad Edge Technology for an estimated cost of approximately $615,000. Evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm Tom Whitmer, I'm the utilities director. And what I bring to you tonight is, hopefully, your authorization for us to, as Steve called it, a waiver of policy. Maybe Steve can enlighten you a little bit more as to what exactly that means before I get into what we're attempting to do here.
So your procurement policy, Mayor and council, does not contemplate a sole source purchase for this amount of money? So what you're doing, rather than coming under an exception built into the policy, you're actually going outside the policy to allow for this purchase under these circumstances, which Mr. Whitmer can explain.
Yeah. The reason we're asking for this is, as all of you are aware, that back in 2006, the EPA lowered the arsenic requirements in our drinking water from 50 parts per billion to 10. As all of you are also aware, that we happened to purchase the six private water systems that were in this area in 2005. And one of the reasons we were able to successfully obtain those systems is simply because of the fact of the cost incurred to implement arsenic treatment. Most of the systems that we have, of the 20 systems that we have in place today, were purchased in the 2006 timeframe. That's a significant amount of time to pass from 2006 to 2020. There's been some changes in technology. I mean, everybody was scrambling back in 2005 and 2006 to come up with a technology that was actually cost-effective. And many of the private water companies couldn't afford it and ultimately we ended up acquiring the six that we got. Unfortunately, you know, technology has changed since 2005, 2006. There are some new medias that are out there. We've been having some difficulty here of late with specifically the three systems you have there. We actually have several others that are on the boards as well that are trending upwards in terms of their ability to actually remove arsenic and keep it below the 10 parts per billion range. We've been working with ADQ to keep them off our back as well. As most of you know, when you hit, go over the 10-part-per-billion range, they don't come looking to find you at that point in time, at least not initially, but they do require that you go out with notice of violations, informing people that you've exceeded that limit. We've been attempting everything under the sun in order to keep us below the 10 parts per billion. We've increased our regeneration time, which is very costly. Instead of doing it once every two or three weeks, in some cases this past summer, we were doing it two and three times a week. When you have one arsenic treatment specialist out there doing arsenic treatment on 20 systems and some of those are requiring two and three times a week, at anywhere from one to three hours per system, it adds up very quickly. Not only in labor costs, but also in chemical costs. So what we did is we went out and started looking to see what was out there. We found a new media out there that's called E33. It's an adsorptive process as opposed to what we currently use. You don't regenerate it. All you do is just run the water through it till it's fully met its capacity and its ability to attract arsenic, and then you dispose it. The labor costs are very minimal, chemical costs are nothing. So we started looking around to see who else has been using it, what their experience has been. There are some limitations on the ability to use it. Most notably, it depends on the chemistry of your source water, your raw water. If it's high in silica, high in vanadium, high in phosphates, things of that nature, that media won't work. But for these three systems that we're using right now, it works very well. Our Arizona Water System to the north, it's a private water company that operates the Sedona system, this is what they have converted all of their current ion exchange over to the E33 media, and they're getting exceptional success from doing so. They're not getting any notice of violations like we've had here in the last year or so. So what we're attempting to do here now is change out our three worst systems that we have right now that we're on the cusp. In other words, we're spiking over that 10-part-per-billion on a fairly consistent basis, even with our additional efforts to try and maintain it and keep it below the 10 parts per billion. So what we're proposing to do tonight is to change those three systems out with new systems. As I said before, this E33 media is, there's only one company that is a supplier of the E33 media, and that's Ad Edge. So what we did is, we approached Ad Edge, well, let me step back a couple steps here. Before we did that, we went to our current manufacturer of our arsenic treatment systems, which is Envirogen. And they came out and they've attempted to do everything to try and make the systems that we currently have in place work and operate successfully. Just wasn't happening. We changed out media, we changed out some of the valving, we changed out our operations, we reduced our bed volume rates for regeneration, we reduced the amount of water that we were pumping, seeing, thinking that if we could potentially lower our output, maybe we could do a better job of capturing arsenic. And none of it seems to be working. We're just slowly losing the game and our arsenic levels are continuing to rise on those systems. So we started working with Ad Edge, but before we went to Ad Edge, we asked Envirogen to submit a proposal to us on changing out one of the systems, because they thought, "Well, maybe we need to change out a system. Maybe there's some defect in your current system. It's been in operation now for, you know, 14 years, so maybe there is a problem." Their bid came in for one system, $355,000, just for the one system. And there was no guarantees as to whether or not it was going to make a difference or not. So we started working with Ad Edge at that point in time on this new media, and they came back and started giving us numbers for theirs. There's another system out there that's produced by Denora, but they use the E33 media, so they have to buy it from Ad Edge, but they do construct their own systems. So we asked for proposals from Denora. Denora came back and submitted proposals on the four systems that we were looking at changing out as well. Looking at the four systems, that exceeded what we had budgeted for this year, because we were originally looking at just changing out one or two systems using Envirogen. So given that we needed to stay under our budget, we decided to go with our three worst systems that were out there. Denora's bid came in at roughly $50,000 or $60,000 more before taxes and freight were included on that than what Ad Edge's was for the three systems, including tax, freight, and installation. So what we're looking to do here tonight is get your approval to allow us to do the waiver of policy in order to purchase these three systems. There is a fourth, or a third company that actually makes systems too. We actually approached them as well, and that's Evoqua. And Evoqua said they weren't interested, they're getting out of the arsenic business and focusing on their activated charcoal systems for the removal of PFOS and PFAS.
Questions, council?
Just to make sure I'm clear, this is within your budget, correct?
Yes, it is. It's actually about $100,000 below what we had budgeted for this year.
Okay, second question. With this, would we sometime later on down the road be able to pass some savings on to our water rates?
Probably not. But our rates are really not contingent upon the operation of the arsenic per se. We've got a debt service that we've got to maintain with regards to a lot of our water costs. So I don't envision us seeing a reduction in our water rates, at least not in the near term.
That's a good question, though.
Unfortunately.
Any other thoughts or concerns?
Do they have any kind of guarantee on it actually removing arsenic if we put that in or?
I didn't understand. Could you say that again?
So if we go and get the system, are they guaranteeing that it's actually going to fix our problem?
I don't think any systems come with a guarantee. However, if you look at the, all the studies that have been done on it, we talked to, oh gosh, a half a dozen systems or other companies around the state that are using this exact system, and looking at our water chemistry, yeah, it should work very well. In fact, they give us, you know, an expected lifetime of the media, and that's averaging anywhere from one year to five years over we change it out. And the change out, we're changing out media as it is right now. The change out on the current media is running us anywhere from $45,000 to $65,000 per system, depending on the size of it. It can be as much as $100,000 on one system because of the size. On this, you're looking at anywhere from $20,000 to $40,000 for change out.
It's clear to me over the years why some of the private companies are so willing to sell their water companies with arsenic remediation costs, so through the roof. And I've lived through too when we've spiked and it's uncomfortable to have to explain to great payers. Who may already be concerned about the cost of water, why their water is also above the federal standards for arsenic. So we don't want to go there again.
No. Mr. Mayor, and that's what I was hesitating to add, but I think it goes to Councilmember Carrat's question, is we have to do something. Now, you know, whether you accept the waiver or not, we'll figure something out, but this is something I've been working on since I got here. One of the directives I got from council at the time was to address some issues in the utilities department. Shortly after I got here, we issued a violation notice for arsenic in one of the departments, and I told them, "Never again." And Tom and the team have been working tirelessly to make that not happen. If you look to the graphs in your packet, it's getting harder and harder. They took a well offline this year, the summer, during peak demand, to make sure that we didn't reach a violation. Again, this isn't necessarily to the waiver issue, but this goes back to the work that they're doing that, and is it going to work? What we're doing now isn't working. This is cheaper than taking a gamble of using the current system that we have many flaws with, long-term problems that we need to get away from. This will be a multi-year process, this is three well, three well systems. This year, we'll come back with more budgeted. Over the next year, you said there were 20, Tom, I think?
We've got 20 total, but we won't have to change them all. We can't change them all out to this simply because some of the raw water and some of those systems won't allow the E33 to work. But some of the primary ones, like this year, the ones that we're doing this year, A262 and Yuma, those are already, we're getting spikes already on our sampling, and that's something we don't want to do. DEQ keeps coming back at us and saying, "What are you doing? You need to do something now. You got to do something. We can't let this keep going like this." So we're kind of at our wits' end, and this is the only solution we've come up that we think is good, is going to be the best opportunity for us to successfully get a hold of the problem there. Next year, we will be coming back with like wells eight and nine. Wells eight and nine, we tried to get it in this year, but wells eight and nine have significant issues with silica, high silica and high vanadium. That causes problems with the media. It actually takes up some of the space on the media, which means your life of the media is going to be shortened significantly. But it's a major system within our system, those two wells. And so we've got to do something there, so we'll have to go with a completely different system there than we're doing somewhere else. And it'll be more expensive.
Thank you.
Do you have a question or?
I had a comment, I didn't have a question, so I wasn't sure. So I think as council and Ms. Whitmer, you may be aware, I'm not a fan of bypassing the competitive bid process.
Oh, absolutely.
However, I do appreciate that there was significantly more documentation provided this time than the last time. Thank you. Also, personally, from the documentation that you provided, I don't see the point in moving forward with the competitive bid process where the technology, or you keep saying the media that you believe is best for our system, has to be purchased from Ad Edge itself. So to me, that seems to justify the qualifications of the firm, the vendor, et cetera, are special or unique enough. So I just wanted to stress though, again, I appreciate that you gave us the information to be able to make that analysis. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, council, are we ready? All right, counsel, are we ready for a motion? All right, I'll go ahead and move then to waive the city's procurement policy and authorize the purchase of arsenic removal equipment and materials from Ad Edge Water Technologies for the proposed cost of approximately $615,000, subject to approval of the final form of agreement by the city attorney.
Second.
All right, mayor, may the motion? Councilmember Wildon seconded it. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Carratt?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildon?
Yes.
Mayor Olinsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item four is discussion of possible legal action to extend the city's current fare-free public transportation policy program.
Good, mayor and counsel. I'm Rudy Rodriguez. I'm the deputy city manager. Some of you may know that on January 26 of 2020 this year, the beginning of this year started one heck of a year for us and also started the first recorded case, confirmed recorded case of COVID-19. Shortly after that, we started doing shutdowns. Essential services were open only on strict restrictions. Our CAT system was no different. Though we didn't shut down, we had to reduce services. We went to just one big circular, and we also reduced the services in our link system in order to be able to still carry individuals. We actually had, we started off with one bus, ended up with two buses, and ended up with three buses running the same circular because we were having physical distancing issues that we wanted to meet. So we ended up still running the system, but unfortunately, it was one big circular. Times changed, and our number of riders declined, not necessarily just because of the COVID, but also because there wasn't space on buses. The city, the city has been funded through the CARES Act program, 100% for this particular year through June, actually through this fiscal year and also into, partially into next fiscal year through the federal fiscal year, that federal fiscal year, that being September 30 of 2021. The fare system, the fare-free system is something that's been contemplated by a lot of communities. Some systems have already switched into that. Recently, we had Olympia, Washington went fare-free. Kansas City, Missouri went fare-free. NAPDA actually went fare-free up in Flagstaff up until recently. They decided to reestablish their fares. And this will be one of the options that we're proposing. Staff has talked to Arizona Department of Transportation, which actually is our pass-through from the FTA, Federal Transportation Administration. They don't have a problem one way or the other. What ends up happening is when we go out and we set up our grants, right off the top, any fares that we receive are reduced from the top. As an example, if we are asking for $1 million and we get $100,000 in fares, they will take that right off the top and will only allow us to budget for $900,000. So it's taken right off the top. If we go ahead and take that off the table and we go fare-free, that $100,000 will go back into the program, and we will be funding, the ADOT will be using the whole $1 million instead of the $900,000. However, if we do go fare-free, that amount that goes in will have to have a matching requirement. For this last fiscal, for fiscal year 2019, that amount was $182,000 that we picked up in fares. Okay? Now, just to explain, fares are not necessarily money that is collected from each and every driver, excuse me, each and every passenger. This is money that's contributed by several programs also throughout the community, such as Spectrum contributes money to the fare-free, to the fare program. And we have a couple, Cottonwood Cares also contributes money to the fare program. And we have a couple of other agencies. So basically, by going fare-free, they would not have to contribute their portion. But out of the, let's just say for 2019, not 13, 19, we had $182,000 in fares. If we go fare-free, about $90,000, roughly 50%, and that's being conservative, would probably lessen that, but we're using a figure of $90,000, would have to be contributed by the city of Cottonwood and its partners. The city of Cottonwood has partners. For those of you who are not aware, we have our, Sedona is one of our partners. They pay 75% of the link system that goes from our library to Sedona and back. We have Yalpai County, who contributes 9% to the system. Clarkdale contributes 6%. And then Cottonwood has a lion's share at 61% because our system is mostly inside of Cottonwood. In your packets, you have a breakdown of how that $90,000 would be distributed. $54,000, nearly $55,000 would be, have to be accounted for by the city accountant, Cottonwood. Now, as I mentioned, for this current fiscal year through fiscal year 2021, we are fully covered. And into fiscal year 22, we would be covered for the first three months, that being July, August, and September. So even those amounts would be further reduced. I also included a fare sheet for each and every one of you to look at. Those are the current fares that we had in place and have had in place since 2015. They're not substantial, but nonetheless, when you're dealing with COVID and reduced wages and business closures, it makes it a little bit difficult to try to balance your home budget while trying to get from place to place on a daily basis. Many of our passengers are, don't have vehicles. We have, we have working agreements right now with Yalpai College. As you know, they've shut down. However, our agreement with them was that we would go ahead and transport their students at 50% off, 50% off of zero is zero currently. And when they open, we will continue that particular contract with them with or without a fare-free program. The two options that we were asking for was, of course, is to continue a fare-free program until further action from the city council. And the other option is to go ahead and possibly extend it through the end of this current fiscal year. Any questions?
It's okay to always be first, Councilmember Wildon.
I know, I'm just thinking.
He's having a moment, so. Okay, okay. Is there an option that counsel would prefer?
Well, I have a question. Doing the fare-free policy through December 31, 2020 to June 30, 2021, are we paying anything? When we say it's fare-free, we're not paying anything? Is that correct?
The fare-free program is talking about passengers, okay? However, right now, through, actually through September of 2021, FTA and the CARES program will go ahead and cover 100% of the transit program, both for the Cottonwood area transit as well as the links program between here and Sedona.
Okay. Through September of next year?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, if I can add, one of the reasons we put an option, you can make the option September, you know, whatever, June 30, is we'll have to come back to council for our whole budget year. So we'll come back. If you decide to only extend this through June of next year, as we begin to plan for the full fiscal budget, we'll have to come back to you, and we'll calculate in, you know, what we're being reimbursed through September, and we'll have to ask this question again at that point. If you make it permanent, then we know how to prepare next year's budget. The one concern I have about making this permanent, you know, it's a policy decision for you, is I don't know that our partners are in. They haven't looked at next year's budget or future budgets. The transit contribution rates from our partners has always been iffy.
A little difficult, too, to get them to contribute. And I'll be honest with you is the city of Cottonwood has carried more than its lion's share of the system. Every year, we give them a proposal, and we end up going slightly over. No matter how you calculate it, it seems like fuel prices, as you may recall, a few years ago were outrageous. We had no clue what it was going to be from one day to the next. We ended up beating all the additional costs. If we have to pay huge overtimes, as we currently are with some of the issues that you may already know with COVID, we end up, well, this particular year, obviously, our transit, just our FTA will cover it, so will the CARE program. However, if we incur any type of overtime issues, huge repair costs, we end up beating the cost because we have a contract with them for a fixed rate. So they make out a little bit better than we traditionally do. But we are committed to the program itself. And if you look at the type of passengers, the number of passengers that we carry, it's grown quite substantially over the years. Unfortunately, right now, we're facing a little bit different program with COVID the way it is. But even today, our numbers are still continuing to increase almost on a daily basis.
All right.
May I add one more thing? I apologize. A couple of things that was mentioned. Selena mentioned that one of the things she wanted to do, part of her marketing program was the zero fee program or fare-free program. They want to go ahead and push that currently with their marketing strategy. And the other one is also that the use of, the handling of cash is also a concern that some of our bus drivers had, especially with the COVID issue. But, you know, we all know that hopefully someday soon, this will all be over. And that sense is also why we're also possibly asking for a deadline. Or if you want to go just eliminate them altogether, that'd be fine, too.
I agree with our city manager's comments. I think it'd be good to discuss this again as we're looking at next year's budget. Item section, ah, it's getting late. Option two, I believe, is that one.
Agreed.
Motion then to that effect?
I move to extend the expiration date of the CAT links systems fare-free policy from December 31, 2020 until June 30, 2021.
All right, oh, I'll second that. Councilmember Henry made the motion. Mayor seconded it. If we could get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Carratt?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildon?
Yes.
Mayor Olinsky?
Yes.
And motion carried.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, mayor and counsel.
All right, next on the agenda is Resolution Number 3076, a resolution expressing the city's support of the Verdi Connect project and urging the Yalpai County Board of Supervisors to reconsider its recent decision to withdraw its sponsorship and support of the project. And this item really comes from me. I wanted to hear from council how we all felt about this, this project in general. Thanks. And we've never been asked to weigh in on the Verdi Connect project, but we have an opportunity here. It's a narrowing opportunity. In fact, the longer this meeting goes on, it may be that the board of supervisors will vote before we have a chance to weigh in at all. But so again, I just, I wanted to bring it forward to council. We did prepare a resolution. But as many of you know, we've, we, and by we, I mean, the region, the valley, has been looking into Verdi Connect for a number of years, at least as far as the connection itself. You know, how it's oriented has been different as different plans study it. However, it's been identified as an important connection, a needed connection. And I, at least for myself, was surprised that the board of supervisors voted it down. And so I thought with this, again, narrow opportunity, maybe our council could weigh in on how we feel about the project. We have no authority over this project at all. It's the board supervisors ultimately that's the decision-maker on this. But again, I think just letting them know how we stand on it may help show some support, or not, from this council. I think, you know, the information in the packet pretty much summed it up. I'm able to answer any questions to my ability. But I know we do have members of the public, too, as well. And I'm sure we have some folks watching. We've received a number of emails on this. It is a contentious issue, for sure, and I respect that. But again, I just wanted to provide counsel an opportunity to weigh in.
I personally am adamantly against changing anything or us supporting the Verdi Connect for several reasons.
And counsel, we can hear from, I only received one forum, but I think there's other folks in the room this evening that would like to comment. We can go ahead and move forward with getting some public comment on this, and then counsel can weigh in, and we can move on. Does that sound good? So we have Mr. Daniel Holland in the room this evening. Are you still with us? Appreciate you sticking it out. It was kind of a longer meeting than we anticipated, but thanks for being here, sir. We do limit your comments to five minutes, please.
Thanks for being here, everybody. I live in Bridgeport. This motion was tabled by the board of supervisors a few weeks ago. And so I don't understand why it's being brought up again. The voters have spoken. There are 1,700 people in Verdi Disconnect. And I just want to make a few points here. I'm wondering if this is part of a plan to develop the Verdi Valley, like North Phoenix, with your proposed annexation of lands from North Cottonwood to the Spring Creek Ranch development proposed. Why not use the $25 million to fix and widen Cornville Road and make it cheaper? It just doesn't make any sense. A few years ago, I walked the whole route. It's gorgeous. I'll call it wilderness with an occasional ranch. Why destroy this with an unneeded road? When are the voters going to be respected? This is why Mr. Garrison was replaced with Mrs. Michaels. There are over 1,700 people in the Verdi Disconnect. Respect their feelings about this. I was looking at some studies today and yesterday, and they seem to indicate that this road would not improve traffic flow significantly. It's good to note that Mr. Garrison, and I've seen the paperwork, was supported by developers in Phoenix that have no, why, you know, why would developers in Phoenix have any say on the future of the Verdi Valley? It just seems kind of ridiculous, you know, that the voters haven't been respected. This was the major reason to replace Mr. Garrison with Mrs. Donna Michaels. Even Republicans supported her. And it just seems very ridiculous to me that the voters' feelings, the ranchers in that area and all the homeowners are not being respected by the board of supervisors bringing this up again and Cottonwood supporting it. this up again and Cottonwood supporting it. I mean, it just, it's just outrageous. So those are some of my feelings. I don't represent any organization except for myself, but I do feel simpatico with other organizations that are against this. And this is the reason why lots of people have moved here from cities because of the rural atmosphere here. And to make this place, you know, building roads everywhere, yeah, I can understand if it was a real necessary thing, roads, hospitals, things like that. But, you know, the studies I was looking at showed very, very, very little improvement in traffic and so on, so forth. So thank you for listening to my comments. I really appreciate all of you being here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holland. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the public this evening that would like to address council? Supervisor-elect Michaels, appreciate you being here. I know that you wanted to address council as well and, and thanks for taking the time out. Can you hear us and can we hear you? That's the big question.
I certainly can hear you and I trust you can hear me. Though I did not request a moment to speak, I appreciate the opportunity to do so. As all of you know, among many other issues related to how we grow together in the future of our communities, our contiguous communities especially, but certainly all of the Verdi Valley and for that matter, Yavapai County. I would just once again voice that I've spent time, as all of you have, listening to my constituents and to a person. They oppose the Verdi Connect for numerous reasons, some of which you heard tonight, many of which you've heard repeatedly over and over again, so I won't do that to you tonight. But I will tell you that my, my position has not changed for all the reasons that you have become intimately familiar with. I don't know what your reason for what it sounded like to me, support for this matter, was tonight after two years ago not weighing in on it or somewhere in that ballpark timeframe. I'm sure it's an important reason and I, I know this, that we, we absolutely share in common that we need infrastructure improvement as it relates to our roads. We need safe transportation, particularly as it relates to getting people in need to our healthcare facilities. But what we don't need, and I've heard it mentioned earlier, is to spend money, especially now, especially now, in these really, and I'll quote, uncertain times that we find ourselves in, on projects that minimally address our infrastructure needs that are to a person opposed or merely to a person opposed. And I remain committed to listening to my constituents, to caring deeply about how we solve these problems together in a collaborative way. And I hope to work with Cottonwood and all of our municipalities, cities and towns and incorporated and unincorporated areas to resolve our joint challenges that certainly relate to infrastructure. But this is not the right way and especially now, it is certainly not the right time to spend this kind of money in an unknown amount for very minimal positive return on it. And so I appreciate very much having the opportunity to speak tonight and look forward again to working with all of you. And in some cases, it's the first time that I've had an opportunity to listen to you during your council meeting and I look forward to working with you in the future together to solve not only this challenge, but all the challenges that we face together as a community and a Verdi Valley. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Supervisor-elect. And in fact, we will see you next week. I believe you're going to be attending our retreat, correct?
I will. Thank you.
That's great.
Look forward to it.
Good. And thanks for being here. So.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Council, any, any additional thoughts to share?
I, I think I, I've been pretty vocal so far about wanting to make sure that we remain rural in Cottonwood, that we're careful about how we grow and what that looks like and we maintain our small town feel. And so, and there's been so much, much public input against this project that I, I don't feel good about it at all. So it's not a project that I can support.
Councilmember Corot or Councilmember Hulse?
I, since I found out we were going to be considering this resolution, I've done a lot of research trying to figure out why there's so much opposition to the road. And I'm still confused today, not quite as much as I was before, but I still don't have a clear indication in my own mind how this is all going to work. So I'm inclined to say no because it seems to be the way things are going and our resolution isn't going to have much impact one way or the other. I'm, I'm up in the air. I'm, I'm still, I see the pros to the road and I see the cons, but I don't understand why the, the county commissioners voted against it. And I, I just feel like if, if they voted against it, they've been dealing this for a year and a half, two years. I, I don't feel that I have enough information to say I support going forward something that our county commissioners have opposed.
Yeah, I, I understand where you're, you're coming from. I, I think for me, it's difficult to, and again, I can, I can understand the opposition because I, just on a very human level, you know, I lived through the Mingus Avenue extension. I lived on property there that, that was greatly impacted when the, when the bridge was built and the traffic immediately overnight increased a lot. And I didn't own the home that I lived in, but it was a home that I had enjoyed as, for my childhood. It was in our family and it changed things. So I understand from a very human level how that impacts folks and I can understand people. I would be one of them to organize and do everything I could to, to fight a project like this. And I don't begrudge anyone that does that. But I have a hard time ignoring that for, you know, 20 to 30 years, we've, we've identified the need as, as a region. And again, Cottonwood wasn't specifically asked to weigh in on this in the last two years, this specific project. We have participated in all the regional planning projects that have taken place over the past several decades to identify those needs regionally and getting traffic to flow through our, our Verdi Valley. So I just have a hard time, you know, ignoring those planning documents that have identified the need. And also it's hard to walk away from an awful lot of money, federal money that would help at least get the bridge built and then get, you know, get many of the issues addressed. So again, I was, I was as surprised too, maybe as some, that the board supervisors voted to reject all bids. I know they have their reasoning and surely they've studied it, you know, a lot more than this council has. But again, I just wanted to present the opportunity to council.
And Mayor, just briefly, because in the interest of time, this meeting is running long and I do believe there's a point to every point that's been made tonight. I, as it's been made abundantly clear from the Verdi Independence coverage of this issue, I completely support this matter, this project. It has been. The need for a connector road has been a regional topic for, ever since I moved to Cottonwood in 2009. I understand the opposition's points clearly. I still believe whichever route we go, we've, we've discussed the widening Cornville Road to Four Lanes, that we don't have a solid path or plan forward to address our, our future growth projections as we see them that impact Cottonwood. And I respectfully, you know, Supervisor Michaels, your, your points were well taken. You do have a different constituency than, than I do. I have heard numerous complaints through the years about traffic. Cottonwood residents trying to return home, using Cornville Road, using our regional road and the need, roadways and the need for the connector has been something that's been voiced by my constituents. I have been attending almost every Verdi Connect meeting, at least in person or remotely that occurred. And again, I, I do see that there are, there is a response to every point that's been raised by the opposition. I'm not going to go into debate for purposes of tonight, except to state that I do completely support Verdi Connect and, and, and leave it at that. Thank you.
Any other councilmembers with? I don't get the sense that a resolution would pass. I'm not sure even worth bringing it up. I think we've all made our, our point clear this evening. And again, for those at, at home and in the public watching the meeting tonight, again, I appreciate all of your, your passion, your drive around this issue. And Supervisor-elect Michaels, again, thanks to you for being on the call today. We look forward to meeting you, though it will still be virtually. We'll, we'll see you again next week.
That's right.
And council, thanks for, thanks for letting me bring this opportunity to you. All right. With that, we'll move on. And I would then motion to pay the claims.
Second.
Mayor made the motion. Councilmember Henry seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. And this is the part of the evening where I think we have to kick everyone out, all right? We're going to go into annual review of the city manager. This is executive session item. And pursuant to Arizona revised statutes 38-431.03A1, the council may vote to convene an executive session to conduct its annual performance evaluation of the city manager, subject to the city manager's right to compel the council to discuss this matter in open So we'll just give a minute for folks to clear out. And I'm not real sure how, you're all just going to wait out in the, those pertinent to?
I'm going to linger somewhere.
Okay. Oh, absolutely, yeah. Let's all take a five-minute break while the crowd clears out.